I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Castle?
Here.
Mr. Harakawa?
Present.
Mr. Lanacy?
Hello.
Mrs. Mack?
Here.
Mr. Strang?
Here.
Okay. I need somebody to make a motion to go into executive session for the medical financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment of employment promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation.
Number six is...
All of that, I'll move.
So moved. Do you know?
All in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a space we can go to now?
Yeah, I was gonna say, is the business office open?
Um, I can't open.
Okay. So we're going to return to open session. I need someone to make a motion to return to open session.
I saw you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Okay. So we will, now that we're back in open session, we will review the agenda. If there's any additions to the agenda, do you have anything?
Uh, good evening. Uh, no, there's no additions to the agenda. I just want to point out, of course, tonight, our big feature, besides just some updates that happened since our last November meeting, is that we're excited to honor one of our kindergarten classes tonight for their exceptional work in reading. So again, we'll be talking about that and honoring them with our royal recognition program. That's our highlight. Everything else will happen.
Thank you very much. And speaking of the royal recognition, we're gonna move right into it. So, do you wanna talk about who we're recognizing and what?
Absolutely. Um, so, thank you, Ms. Lanacy. I'm actually very privileged to... Sorry for the long pause. I thought it was Jeff or Zahn. I was breaking from there. Sorry, Lisa. Broke what I found it. Sorry, Lisa. So, one of the things we're very excited about, and families, thank you so much for joining us tonight, again, on a cold Thursday. It's, you know, we couldn't pick the weather, but we're so glad you're here. This is great. One of the pieces that we revived last year, and I always gotta give this a little quick prelude before we kinda go on, is the royal recognition program. And I believe it was around for a couple of years, previous board members right before, and then it kinda settled down for a bit. We revived it last year as a way of kinda recognizing our students as either individuals or a collective body that really embodied our mission statement. So I always just kinda put it up there as kind of a reminder. It is something that is on our walls, on our letterhead, but it kinda just becomes background noise after a while. So, one of the things we always ask, and I think I'm very proud of, especially tonight because we have Mrs. Sanger's kindergarten class with us, is that typically, one of the things we wanna do when we honor students or groups is to make sure that it was something above and beyond is probably the wrong word. We're basically above and beyond that really exemplifies the mission statement. So not just participation-based, but basically doing something that really epitomizes being, you know, a royal, being a member of the Gardner-Dixon community. So, we extend an invitation for nominations throughout the whole community, and it's always nice when we have our students that are on teams or impart by extracurricular activities that are nominated, but it's always nice when you have something kinda out of the box. So, Mrs. Sanger, who's a new addition to our Gardner-Dixon family in our kindergarten program, Mrs. Sanger is right here, by the way. So, Mrs. Sanger actually emailed, again, who was very, this is obviously novel to you, being new to the district, and raised the point, hey, what about honoring my class? And kinda recognizing them for something that had to do within the classroom. And so, basically, something we're very excited about was it tied into course of literacy and our reading, and also what was above and beyond, I think, especially in kindergarten, considering it's only 18 weeks into the school year. So, Lindy, I'm gonna turn over to you, actually, as to why you made the nomination. It was fantastic. And actually, Lindy has a much better graphic to display than mine, so it's gonna be good. So, um, Mrs. Sanger, please.
Thank you for all coming tonight. My class has been working super hard, uh, reading, and from the beginning of the school year to the first report card time, we made lots of gains that we were super excited about. And from the first report card to now, every student in my class has gone up at least one reading level. So, Mr. Newmark and I have been working hard. Mr. Newmark is one of the worst people that worked in my class. And so, we've both been doing guided reading groups, doing some intervention work with kids, making sure that we're staying on top of anything that might not be happening right where we want it to be, so that kids aren't falling behind, and they're making awesome gains and progress. So, we were super excited, and a couple of weeks ago, I had a student, I was looking for a particular read-aloud book, and I couldn't remember where I had put it. And so, he said, well, can I just read a book until you find it? I was like, to the whole class? He said, yeah. And I kinda like stopped. Like, yes, that is a wonderful idea. So, stopped looking for the book altogether, pulled out my phone, and took a picture of this five-year-old reading to 19 other five-year-olds. And by the end of the book, they were glued. It was just a book that he'd been reading in our guided reading group, so it was a book he had read more than once. He was comfortable reading at his level. And at the end of the book, every hand shut up. When is it my turn? So I said, alright, we're gonna get a list. You're all gonna get a turn. We'll go through the list. We'll keep going. I've been taking pictures and trying to send them to parents, so that parents know, this is what your kids are doing on their own. This was not Mr. Newmark and I saying, wouldn't it be great to read a book to people? They're that excited about the reading that they're doing. So, I had to share that with Dr. Riordan and the board, and anybody else who would listen to me, because I was so bummed. And so, when Dr. Riordan said, you know, we're looking for some, some new and different things to recognize, I said, how about five-year-olds doing their own read-alouds? And, um, we put together a little slideshow, so that, um, I thought it was a lot of pressure to say, hey, let's read some books in front of a bunch of people that you don't even know. One thing on it's your class, you know, one of your own classmates that you read to in front of every day. So, as in, so you can see them reading. And, um, they are just doing an awesome job. They're reading everything, everywhere. They're noticing things. I did have a parent say to me, so, I've been telling my child that the crane machine in the grocery store is broken, and because of you, I can't use that excuse anymore, because you let me know, broken starts with a B, Mom, and that, that word doesn't say broken. But at the same time, we're like, woo-hoo! So, we're reading it everywhere, we're using those skills, and, um, they're just gonna keep going, and I know that they're gonna end kindergarten as even more exceptional readers than they already are.
Great. If you could log in. If you could log in, that'd be great. So again, as you can see, it's exciting that we have, you know, recognizing last month, we recognized cross-country, which again, had sixth or eighth graders now to have kindergarten recognized, that's really cool. And, Mrs. Sanger, thank you for taking that risk of nominating your class.
Yeah, I think it's a great, we're able to get a whole cross-section of our type of school, not just middle school.
I agree. Yeah, it is nice to have the elementary and the middle school, yes. That's what how patient our students are. Thank you. Being very patient. Actually, not to put you on the spot, Mrs. Sanger, but also in filling some airspace, too. These, these pictures would be great, actually. Perhaps we could make sure they're on the website, too.
Three percent charge. You're charging?
No.
You're charging?
No. Good. There we go.
Nice photos.
That's awesome.
Nicely done.
Thank you again. And it's not just Mr. Newmark and I. It's your parents, too. You guys are reading with them at home. It shows. Thank you so much for your support.
Mrs. Sanger, thank you so much. And Mr. Newmark, too, is also with us in the back here. Thank you. So actually, Mrs. Sanger, I'm gonna have you come up with me, if that's okay, because it's great to have you here. And as you know, this is our tradition, is we do like to present our students with a certificate. And what we'll do is, those that aren't here, we'll read on the announcements tomorrow on television. It says at the bottom, students, for your dedication and progress in reading, and gratitudes from the Wyandotte School Board of Education. So I'll ask you to come up here, shake all our hands, Mrs. Sanger, for comfort. I'm gonna have you call our names, if that's okay.
Okay.
That way it's not so perceptive. And students, we'll have you come up, we'll shake your hands, and we'll take a nice picture for Twitter.
Ready?
Aye, Mrs. Sanger, we're ready.
Okay. Dominic Caglion. How about a handshake? Alright.
It's okay. Sounds beautiful. Dominic was our model, okay? Me, too.
Our Quentin Commonal. Alright. Nice job. Cooper Donahue. Kendall Blazer. Grayson Hannigan. Brayden Houston.
We're all trying to be brave.
Cameron Houston. Joshua Kimble. Ava K. I always butcher it.
Oh, that's good.
Mike Palekay. Alright. Helen McDuff. Nolan Murnane. Aiden Nyber. Cora Poulter. Charlie Rio. Blake Tokars. Melania Vazana.
You're right, totally fair.
Come on, I just saw you today.
Nicely done. Thank you.
And Rachel Wilson.
Nicely done.
Hey, now you can get your photo.
Okay.
This is going on Twitter.
This is going on Twitter, guys. So what do you say, can you hold up your certificates? Perfect. I think they are all right side up.
And don't put them in front of your face. We wanna see your smile.
Okay, this is perfect. Alright, hold there. Nice big smile. And you guys look over here. Perfect. Nicely done. Boys and girls, and families, thank you so much for joining us. This really is amazing, and again, we're so proud of them. Mrs. Sanger, thank you for making the nomination. Oh, Mrs. Sanger.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be listening to the morning announcement tomorrow. Sounds good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Great.
Thank you.
Oh, those are real. Mrs. Castle? The cookies are from you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I just said get it put the other way out.
Oh, it's fine. Thank you, families.
Bye.
Thank you for coming out and joining us.
Thank you. You guys can move up to a front.
I know, I just didn't think of that.
We all showered tonight.
I did in college because of...
Because you were paying.
Your check's in the mail, right?
Okay. Moving right along. We will move on to 1.7, acceptance of the financial reports. This month, we have the internal claims auditors report for November of 2016, and we also have the monthly treasurer's report with budget transfers.
I was just gonna say, where's the minutes?
We skipped 1.6.
Oh my goodness, you're right. I'm sorry. So backing up. 1.6, approval of minutes of the previous minutes. Excuse me, minutes of the previous meeting. And we only have November 17, 2016. Would somebody like to make a motion?
How much motion?
Second.
I need a special? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, 1.7, acceptance of the financial reports. We have the internal claims audit, auditors report for November 2016, and the monthly treasurer's report with budget transfers. Can I have somebody make a motion on that?
A motion?
I'm sorry.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Great, take your back, Bill.
Thank you.
1.8, visitors and communication. Letter A, communications to the board. I know I didn't receive anything. I don't know if anybody else did. Help from the office? No? Okay. Letter B, opportunity for the public to be heard. Nobody signed up? Okay. Moving right along. 2.0, reports to the Board of Education. 2.1, Board of Education reports and updates. I don't know that we have any. Did you have anything?
Well, I didn't formally write up anything, but we never did report on our meeting. We, we attended a, Dr. Riordan and I attended a session at Quest R3 where Dr., yes, Ilya, what's her first name?
Mary Ann.
Ilya, Commissioner of Education, support to the school districts. And it was very informative. It was, I, as someone who worked for the department for 40 years, I like her style. She's so different from anybody else that's been there. She's taken charge. She's, we talked about assessment, the changes in assessment, talked about testing, talked about, as I was talking with these guys before, about bringing back in different things into the curriculum, like, you guys remember when you went here, shop and home ec and that type of thing? Because not every kid is gonna be college-bound, so we, you know, a lot of school districts need to start looking at that type of thing. So it was really very informative, and I, I don't know that there's anything, what was your takeaway? Did you have any special takeaway from it?
I think what was interesting was, we, we had attended last year when, at a, when she first appeared on the scene, and the house was packed. This time, the audience is probably maybe 14, 15, you'd say. You know, which I took as kind of more that, when she first joined New York State or came from Florida, there's a lot of angst with Common Core, the assessments, there was kind of a lot of, you know, opinions that had to be shared. I think she's heard those. There's, obviously, there are certain things she can do and certain things that she, she doesn't have a lot of power to do. But I think, I took the attendance as almost like she's making progress. Again, it's obviously, you know, at a pace that sometimes isn't as fast for people, but you know, she's heard what people have said about the assessments, the opt-out movement. I think she's trying, at least within the constraints, to do something with that information, you know, the, the Common Core standards, pieces like that. So, this conversation was a little bit different than the last one, which I thought was nice.
And we, she talked about staffing, too, because a lot of folks talked about, and, you know, school districts talked about special education and the issue of that, and knowing that, I worked in that office, so I know, they used to have one-on-one contact at the department. You could call them and say, this is, you know, this is what's happening. And they're still there, but there's just not as many of them. And she was very upfront about staffing, and it's, it's DOBs, you know, their, their hands are tied. It goes to DOB, and you may not see it again. So the department is very understaffed at this point, and she made that very clear, that she, it's out of her hands. She really can't do anything with it. But they're, they're trying, they're trying to get it back up and, and to where it should be, and, I mean, we saw in facilities planning when it took so long to get our plans through. So, but she's, she's come through with what she's talked about. She's taken action. She hasn't just said she's gonna do it and then not do it. I think she's, she's made some real progress.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Moving on to 2.2, district slash superintendent program report. You up?
Thanks. Actually, I'll combine the district and like the, the building level. Dr. Yodis is actually unavailable tonight due to an illness. And so to kinda cap, recap since our last meeting, basically, as you can imagine, the holiday season brings with us a lot of events, most recently, again, Mary Alice Newell being in our audience. Wanna thank Mary Alice Newell for a fantastic two concert series, our middle school concert last night, and our elementary concert last week. Fantastic job. Mrs. Swart obviously conducts our chorus, who's not here tonight, but again, fantastic roundup last night. If you go on Twitter, you'll see clips from both, both pieces. Well done. And again, the rehearsals leading up to that really showed the work that went into that. And that, to me, really kinda captures the, the three weeks kinda leading up to the holiday break, dances and festivities, though our, our twinkle dance was postponed to a later point due to what we perceive at this point as a, people being busy, so we ruled that out again. We did our snowflake dance for the middle school last, two weeks ago. Also, our swag celebration, this is kinda backing up since our last board meeting, was very impressive. As you know, we continue in middle school to kinda honor our swag students, the success, willpower, attitude, and goals. What's been kinda nice is we added a service component to that this year, so instead of just recognizing students for going above and beyond and getting a swag award, we try to honor that with something that's both, you know, extrinsically motivating, but also something that is, you know, more of a give-back. So this year, in addition to a pizza lunch, we did actually some baking based on donations from our staff, and we actually produced over 40 loaves of bread for Unity House for Thanksgiving dinners, which was nice. That was kind of a nice way of really rounding out that experience. And again, the program started last year, and it keeps evolving into great things, and that was really nice give-back. And also, over 130 cards for Remembrance of their Manner, just like cheer-me-up cards, so, you know, just nice, great in your day. So it was really cool, and they were very thankful for that. And obviously, the next couple of weeks will bring the same thing, that kinda festivity of the giving spirit as well. On the district level, just a couple little things. Lead testing, as you know, that's been kind of a big thing in districts. One of the pieces I'd like to report is today. As you know, we had a few pieces that came up hot. Most of those were restroom sinks, so those will be remedied in the capital project. But the kitchen sink was the, where we wash most of our utensils. We did replace a component. We had that retested on Tuesday. It came back today virtually lead-free, so that everything in the kitchen is 100% safe. So basically, the rest of the components will be remediated in the projects. That's a good thing to know that we're on track, and we're making those fixes very quickly. Speaking of kitchens, we had a food audit that was done by the Office of Child Nutrition two weeks ago, and that's a pretty impressive thing for us, because again, it's not a most, it's not a glamorous audit. It's not one that really always makes the paper. But really, you know, well, if it does, you're not talking about it. So, on a positive note, it is kind of impressive when a small, smaller school district, individuals came out, they spent the day with us, they looked at everything from the hygienic practices to the cash flow and pieces like, of that nature. And again, with the exception of a few suggestions of more, hey, you could do it this way if you wanted to, they actually found us to be a model, a model institution. Actually, they were taking pictures to use on their website at a future date, because they felt that was really a model. It was cleanliness, the approach the staff take with students, which is really impressive, because again, sometimes a school nutrition program can get a bad rap. So both in cost and also in what we put out, so to see cost-wise that we're, we're doing very well, and also that, you know, delivery-wise, presentation, you know, noteworthy enough for them to say, let's, can we take some pictures? Which, of course, we were very happy to oblige with that. And with that, going into the capital product update, as that kinda ties in as well, we did have our architects out today, kinda doing some site visits. Basically, there's a few components, we'll probably in January start looking at some real hard dates. So at this point now, CSR's been coming out to kinda map out the final sketches of the building. We're still waiting on SED approval of the final plans, so we're not sure yet if the plans that were submitted have any suggestions or comments. They don't believe, at this point, we don't believe there are anything, there isn't anything to be wary of, but the architects and the project managers are coming out to kinda do walkthroughs and kinda really get the feel for, you know, where are the outlets, where the circuit breakers, things like that, so they can really start to look at, you know, logistics, how to relocate a panel, so to speak, to another place. The goal is obviously in January, come back with some hard dates, and when we put out to bid, and of course, subsequently, when we break ground. So again, we are making progress. It's a little bit steady, but once again, we are on track. That's fantastic.
Thank you very much. And you said Dr. Yodis isn't here, so there's no principal's report. 2.4, PTO update. Do you have anything, Becky? Or, oh, Sue's here.
Sue's here. Yeah, a couple things. Still time of the year, but still moving along. We've recently wrapped up our apparel sale. So if, we've got some people picking up still, some of their items. We will hold a second one closer to field day, as we've typically done. We've got some, a new fundraiser happening, Santa Express tickets run through Yankee Trails. We'll see how that goes. That year, it's actually quite funny. I didn't have a chance to plan, but I'm sure by here it's a good time. We've got Colony School Bucks still happening constantly, so if you guys have any receipts from the movies, or Cheesecake Factory, or gift cards, or Barnes &amp; Noble, or the stores, pop them in the PTO box in the front. We are currently, I think, in fifth or sixth place. We ran a couple of specials. We dropped off, I think, like 50 or 60 coats, used coats as a fun drive over to the mall, as well as about 50 toys that we recently had a toy drive. So, doing some good there as well. Exciting stuff. We have a science club that has started, been started up by a mom of a second grader. How is it? Is your son in it?
No.
No, he's not.
Heard a little bit.
Second, third, and fourth, run by a couple of parent volunteers, and I believe, is it seamless? Yeah. So it's currently, I think it's 10 weeks, or five or 10 weeks, but she's looking at different options, as long as she has the volunteers to sustain the program. We've got about 40 kids, 50 kids that are involved, you know? So it sounds like that's something that might be ongoing, hopefully. We've wrapped up our holiday shop. Always a good time.
I love that part, Rita. It's so much fun.
We've recently held our...
The kids love it, though.
They do.
I mean, they really do.
Spelling bee, we narrowed down about six contestants per grade. That will be held in early January. Meredith and I will hold our evening bee trial run, January 5th, I believe, so the next week will be the actual school-wide spelling bee. We've got some exciting news. Monday, we were meeting with administration, the board, PTO board and administration. We have filtered through, we obviously have our PTO funds up, we are looking to spend, we have done step two, which is have parents prioritize all of the suggestions that were input for how we wanna spend the money. So now we are step three, going to meet, figure out how much things cost, and figure out how to spend the money. And that's gonna be happening on Monday. And then, other exciting news, PTO might be having some type of like sister PTO, it's a special ed form of PTO called SECTA, so Special Ed PTA. And we are meeting with them to discuss how we can start this up and how we can benefit one another and get that rolling, hopefully, in January, February. That's it.
Nice.
Sue, I just wanna comment on the holiday shopping. It was great stuff.
No, I know.
No, it really was. I mean, compared to what back in the day, the stuff, I mean, I still have some of the stuff the kids bought me, but, I mean, it was, it was nice stuff. There were a lot, a lot of choices.
Thirty carts happening at Christmas tree shops. It took us an hour to have to check out.
I can't even imagine. Shoot me when I go into Christmas tree shop. But it was great.
We loaded the cars and then had to go back into the receipt, because it was like... Like, it was fun.
It's a lot of work. I appreciate it. It was not...
Sue, on the survey, are you guys gonna publish any results or anything back out on the website of the survey?
Oh, yeah. Well, we've got the survey, so then we prioritize it to like how to work. Special needs, equipment, rooms, extrapiga. So that was then... We actually had like 93 responses, which I was very excited about, because that was actually more than the initial response that we had of the ideas. But we will meet, and then once we discuss, I guess, we probably... It's gonna take a little research and figure out how much backyard bench would be, and this and that, whatever. We end up doing those things. So hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll have some answers and then look through.
I apologize. How many total students do we have?
360.
360, so 30%... I do surveys. 30% results on... Return on surveys is like phenomenal. I mean, even just saying that out there and putting it out there.
I triple-checked it.
Yeah, that's like ridiculous.
Of course, I don't know how many people responded. I don't... But that's okay.
No, I only responded once, but I definitely did get it twice.
But that just shows that there are people...
True.
15% is considered really...
15%.
That's good. Considered good?
That's considered good, yeah.
Direct mail, 2%. But I know it's taking a really long time. It's just, we don't want to have anybody be dissatisfied with how the money's spent. So in order to do it, it's just...
It's great. I think it's a great process.
There were some great ideas listed there, too.
Yeah, there were.
As I went through them, there were really some great ideas. So it'll be interesting to see what you guys come up with when we work with final numbers and stuff.
Okay. Thank you, Sue. 3.0, Appointments and Authorization. Unless anybody objects, we will do a consent agenda for 3.1 through 3.5. Any objections? Okay. 3.1, Approve CSE/CPSC Recommendations As Per Attached. 3.2, Approval of the 2017-2018 Wyandotte Community Free School District Budget Calendar. 3.3, Accepted Donation From Lisa and Jim Karim For Two Instruments. Pearl Bell Kit, Value of $90, and King Trombone, Value of $200. 3.4, Approve The District Professional Development Plan For The 16-17 School Year. And 3.5, Approve Sarah Lant, Six Month Probationary Full-Time Teacher's Aid Effective Tomorrow, December 16, 2016, As Per The WTAA Contract. I need somebody to make a motion.
A motion.
A second.
Any discussion on any of that?
Oh, I just had a question on the...
Oh, please.
Professional... Where does this go from here? Is this just an internal document, or...
Excellent question. Actually, to refer your attention to the PD Plan, it actually... Do you reflect some grammatical pieces? So thank you, Mrs. Castle.
You're welcome.
So, one of the pieces that the districts are responsible for each year is developing a PD Plan, a professional development plan. Besides having it on file as an internal document, we will be submitting this to the state, and actually, that serves a twofold purpose. One is to have that on file, but also, part of the new regs require that new teachers, or under the new certification, which is actually not that new any longer, receive professional development, but only by certified individuals. Meaning, so faculty meetings, department meetings, things that used to count, if the individuals are not certified by the state, they technically do not count towards those hours, which would mean teachers would have to go to outside conferences, it could be expensive, or that person might not be on the preferred list, as it's called, meaning the state rules it. But if a district gets approval from the state of their plan, the people in-house, such as myself, Dr. Yodis, Mr. Newmark as reading coordinator, Stephanie Carbone, any workshops they provide will count, because if the state approves of the plan, in turn, those hours with those people count towards those people. So actually, the plans, there's kind of a twofold purpose. One is, it reflects kind of our goals for the year. We obviously will be updating that each year. We want it to be a document that was readable. As you'll see, it's something that's very short, because we feel documents will become very lengthy, just kind of become shelved. We're hoping it's something that the staff actually uses and refers, also maybe we can easily update. But also, the names referenced in here, once approved, will allow faculty meeting Tuesday the 19th with Dr. Yodis and Dr. Reardon discussing this. You know, they usually will keep a log. It would count now towards maintaining the certification, once the plan is approved. So that is kind of the next step, is to put it into the teach portal.
Any other questions or discussion?
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Herakawa?
Yep.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strain?
Yes.
Okay. 3.6, Approval Of Substitutes. We have one on the list. She is my wife, so I'm going to abstain all the way around. Substitute custodian, $12.50 per hour for Joyce Lanacy. I need somebody to make a motion.
A motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Herakawa?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy is abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strain?
Yes.
Okay. 3.7, Second Reading Of Our Policies. I'll do 3.7 and 3.8 together, because it's the second reading and the approval of the same policy. A, Equal Opportunity And Nondiscrimination Policy, 0100. Equal Opportunity And Nondiscrimination Regulation, 0100R. Evaluation Of The Superintendent Policy, 0320. Donations And Gifts And Grants To The District, Policy 1800. Board Member School Visits, Policy 2111.1. And Special Meetings, Policy 2320. Can I have somebody make a motion?
A motion?
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to compliment, again, as you know, the second reading means that basically they're ready for approval, but the compliment, also an update in the policy committee, we're once again on pace. We received the 4,000 series, and we're actually about halfway through. We had a few questions that we're kind of waiting for. We're also having our special ed members review those policies, because they are pertaining to special education. But we look forward to meeting in January to kind of wrap up perhaps the 4,000 series. But we are up to date, and that's a great thing. So we're about midway through the policy review process in general, besides the 4,000 series. That's a good thing.
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Herakawa?